Mr. Mayor, we're live and ready.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call meeting to order. It's the regular meeting of the Saldovia City Council Monday, August 25th, 2025, time is 6:09 PM. And we'll go and do roll call. Rojas?
Here.
Peyton?
Here.
Keith Lee?
Here.
Langbart?
Here.
And Barbara?
Here.
Okay, we have all five council members in attendance tonight, and we do have a quorum. If you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic where our riches stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have no accused absences. Item D, agenda approval. Look for motion to approve tonight's agenda.
All motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda from Peyton, second by Keith Lee. Any further discussion on the agenda before we vote on its approval? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the approval of tonight's agenda. All those in favor. Rojas?
Aye. Yay.
Peyton?
Aye.
Keith Lee?
Aye.
Langbart?
Aye.
And Barbara?
Uh.
Okay, motion passes, five in the affirmative. And as for the agenda approval. Item E, consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are approved with a single motion, no discussion, and one vote. A council member may request to remove an item for discussion in a separate vote. Items removed from the consent agenda will be placed under new business. Tonight's consent agenda consists of approval of minutes from the regular meeting, August 11th, 2025. There are no ordinance introductions. There is one resolution, and that's Resolution 26-04, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Saldovia, appointing election judges for the regular municipal election to be held on October 7th, 2025. Does any member wish to remove any item from tonight's consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, we'll go and look for a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda as written.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda by Langbart, with a second by Keith Lee. Any further discussion on the consent agenda before we vote? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the approval of tonight's consent agenda as written. All those in favor. Rojas?
Aye.
Peyton?
Aye.
Keith Lee?
Aye.
Langbart?
Aye.
And Barbara?
Uh.
Motion passes with five in the affirmative. All right, that is the approval of tonight's consent agenda. Take us to item F, mayoral proclamations, none. Item G, public presentation, prior notice. We have none for tonight. Item H, public presentation for items not on the agenda. Liz is making a quick check.
It does not look like we have anybody signed up, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, anyone online? Same. Okay. It'll take us to item I, committee and advisory board reports. And I know we have Walt Sonnen tonight. He's going to give us an update on the CERCAC.
Yes.
Walt?
Yes, I'm. I'm speaking to, as you represented it, to CERCAC, which is the citizens or Cook in the Regional Citizens Advisory Council. Sometimes we throw these acronyms around and no one really knows what we're talking about. I, one, I, my main purpose is to alert you to a meeting that will happen here in Saldovia on the 5th of September. This meeting rotates among three three members of the council, one from Homer, Saldovia, and Kodiak. The rest of the meetings are in Kenai and Anchorage. There's three meetings or two meetings in it's one meeting a year in Kenai, one meeting a year in Anchorage, and the third meeting, there are three meetings a year, is rotated amongst the three municipalities that I just mentioned. So this comes around once in a while, and I would like to encourage folks to attend. And I've, I've been to three or four of these meetings that come to Saldovia, and there's very poor attendance from, from the people of Saldovia. And I wonder if anybody really knows or cares what this group is doing. And I'm pretty much devoted to the group. I think they, they make a huge difference in keeping an eye on the transport, storage, and production of crude oil here in the inlet, and we, we do not want to repeat what happened almost 36 years ago. And I think the council has a very important role in that. So let me explain the meeting a little bit to you. The meeting will start at nine, nine in the morning, and it's at the conference center down the street. The first half of the meeting is the one that, that you folks might be most interested in. The second half of the meeting has to do with more committee reports and internal stuff within the organization itself. The, the meeting will have a couple of speakers, and I, the one is Brian Hawkins, who I'm sure most of you have heard his name. He's been the port director at Homer for probably a couple of decades. And he is going to speak about the Homer Harbor expansion product, project, and I think it's moving forward even with the restriction coming from Washington on federal funds. He, he seems to think that this, this might go forward. And what they want to do is establish a harbor outside the existing harbor for large boats. I, I'm a harbor user, and I go over there, and I think all of us who use the fast ferry to cruise by that long dock with all the great big boats parked on it, and they, they have they consistently have a lot more boats that want to park there that they don't have room for. Anyway, that should be very interesting. And the second part, and I'm not sure exactly where this fits into SISPRE, but they, a speaker will come and talk about the, the incident that happened a couple of years ago where the, in the Baltimore Harbor, at the main dock where containers are loaded and offloaded, a ship was headed out to sea, and he lost steerage, and he ran into a bridge. And the bridge is the, was, is the main road between the major cities on the east coast, up and down. And I don't know exactly what that's going to be, but I'm very interested to, to see about that. In addition to that, I'm asking you, Mr. Mayor, if you can come to that meeting and welcome people to town. That is a kind of a common thing at the beginning of these meetings.
Yeah, I'm unfortunately Heidi had hit me up for that, and I'm, I've got to be in Tulkina that day. I've done that in the past, so we'll see if we can't get someone else to attend in my absence. Yeah, that's we've had to make a few plans for our business as well to have coverage while we're going to be out of town for that, that weekend, so.
Okay.
But we'll get somebody.
Okay, as long as you have that covered.
Yeah.
I think that's almost necessary. And let's see, I'm also with the SOS organization, and we plan to have an exercise on the 6th of September, Saturday, and the 20th of September, Saturday, Saturday, and, and on, on the water exercises with putting boom out and that kind of thing. So that hopefully this will go through. We we haven't had one exercise this year. Generally, we have one in the spring and one in the fall, but the spring thing just didn't happen, so we wanted to have a couple of exercises there. And I hope to put an announcement of this on the bulletin board in the post office and maybe on social media to kind of get a couple more people to come. And that's it. And you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to.
Anyone have any questions for Walt regarding the upcoming meeting or just CERCAC in general?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you all for coming forward and sharing the information. And I do hope as many people as possible can attend the meeting. I know it's good, several times it's got weathered out, so it'd be great if everything worked out, as many people as possible could be there. I think what happens a lot is the, we all just rely on organizations to take care of things, and we always hope that a disaster won't happen. Those of us who are here during the Exxon Valdez can remember how it all started and what we were doing at the time, trying to put, make boom and all that sort of thing. So the organization is an incredible asset to the state of Alaska. Thank you very much, Walt, for what you do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Vivian.
Yeah, thanks, Vivian. All right, thank you, Walt. Appreciate your information tonight. No other reports, Heidi? Okay. All right, that'll take us down to item J, administrative reports. None listed for tonight. And that'll take us down to next item, item K, public hearings for ordinance 26-02, an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Saldovia, enacting, enacting chapter 18.18, administrative approvals and permits, amending chapters 18.20, definitions, 18.52, commercial business district, and 18.24 zoning districts, and repealing and reenacting chapter 18.70, the land use table. And this was introduced on August 11th, and I'll go ahead and let the city manager take it away.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this was introduced August 11th, and like, as you said, it's on page nine of your packet. There's also a memo provided on page 35 of the packet. And this was discussed at the city council work session on, going to that page. Oh, was that? That would not have been on July 30th. I can't remember what date, and I did not write it down apparently, but there was a city council work session the 14th of August, where this was, August 6th, thank you, Clerk Diamond, where this memorandum and these changes were discussed. And we did get a one comment from Mayor Campbell about the dwelling unit definition, which I'm glad that he provided that input because it is referred back and forth across the code. And so that strikeout has been removed and was removed in the version we're on, as you can see here, version eight of these changes. So been a lot of discussion, a long time working on this document, and it's still a working document, but you, you can see here on page 35, other than that removal of the strikeout through the definition for dwelling unit, and all the other changes are listed here from a little bit of the background of the work session that was held on May 14th, initially with council, when this was referred from the planning commission to the council. The changes that you guys asked to have seen, those changes went through the Saldovia Planning Commission, and then again, back to you guys where as stated, version, sorry, version nine has the change, version eight isn't here, version nine has the change for the dwelling unit. So with that, those changes are listed, and you will see them in bold and underline for new additions, and then strikeout for things that are removed. I would also like to just comment that there is a public comment in the laydown, and I did speak with the individual who made the comment and let him know that that discussion on the building height was not scheduled to be discussed tonight. However, that's something that the council wants to pursue, where that can be referred back to the planning commission to review that definition for building height, or we can, we can refer that back as staff to planning commission for his comment. So just made sure to reiterate that that wasn't a change that was, was being addressed this evening, unless that's something you guys want to pick up. And otherwise, here are four questions if you guys have any. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, sounds good.
One more thing, sorry. I would also like to say that Cola Collier is here in the audience, and she was on the subcommittee that originally picked up these, originally picked up this issue, went through that long process and provided recommendations to the planning commission. She followed the process through the planning commission as an individual in that district and the community and of the subcommittee. Subcommittee is, has great input and feedback. If you guys have questions, she's been through this entire process.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and open it up to council for any comments or questions on ordinance 26-02.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yep, go ahead, Vivian.
Yeah, I was just kind of going through the document, and we've worked on it quite a long time. So, and so the corrections and the concerns we had at our last meeting were addressed and are now in form into our, into the document in front of us, correct, Heidi?
The concern? Yes, that's correct. That's why this is version nine.
Perfect. Okay, yeah. To me, we've worked on this issue pretty darn hard and appreciate all the work that's been done on it. It seems like I'm ready to move forward with it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Vivian. I think one thing that stands out is the number of versions that we've gone through and iterations on this. Quite, quite a number. I mean, that tells me that obviously the community and the council and everyone involved, the committee, this was not taken lightly in terms of thought process and what the, what the final product was or is. I'm sure it's still not a perfect document, but it's a lot better than where, I think where we started. So I'll definitely be in support of the ordinance tonight. Anyone else have any additional comments, questions before we go to public? Okay, we'll go ahead and go to public. Do you have Liz, anyone signed up or anyone in the audience wish to comment tonight on the ordinance 26-02?
We have nobody signed up online, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
See if anybody in the audience might want to speak. Not seeing anyone.
Okay, no takers. All right, sounds good. All right, we'll bring ordinance 26-02 back to council for final action tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 26-02.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Member Rojas to approve ordinance 26-02, second by Councilmember Keith Lee. Any further discussion on ordinance 26-02 before we vote? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the approval of ordinance 26-02. All those in favor. Rojas?
Aye.
Peyton?
Aye.
Keith Lee?
Aye.
Langbart?
Aye.
And Barbara? Motion passes with five in the affirmative, and that was the approval of ordinance 26-02. Okay, that will take us down to item L, unfinished business. We have none. Item M, new business, none. Item N, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is in the laydown, and I'll just run through it real quick. I attended the AML Summer Conference two weeks ago in Utqiabek, up north of the state here. I got to dip my toes in the Arctic Ocean, go to the most northern point of the state. That was really a fun side adventure over this overall conference. We did have representatives from that area. They talked a lot about their trilateral organizations and how well that's worked for for their area to receive funding and to accomplish tasks. And it was really neat because I think we've kind of started that process between the city of Saldovia, the city of Homer, and Saldovia Village Tribe. They really focus in on having a member or having their tribal government, their local government, and their associations, village associations, and a trilateral agreement, memorandum of agreement. That way, they have their priorities that they're focused on. Of course, they're not always going to agree on everything, but they do have their main priorities, and they're able to speak with one voice and push that forward. And that goes from their more local communities up into their borough who is also in a trilateral. So that was really neat. It was, it was empowering to hear about how some of those communities have really stepped up, you know, the borough stepped up up there to make sure that they have the best search and rescue program and that they're really providing for the citizens, even though the obligation might fall on the state or on somebody else. And the message was really kind of one of, it may be somebody else's obligation, but ultimately, it's our responsibility for our citizens. So it was just a really overall neat experience. Like I said, we also had members of the state legislator there. And so we got a lot of updates on what's happening or could potentially be happening. What's happening right now, they're still in they're still in special session, and it sounds like they might be continued to call back, be called back to special session throughout the end of the year. So we'll see how that progresses. But then also, you know, things to look forward to in the upcoming session, legislative sessions for next year. So we'll look forward to seeing more on that. And then there was a member of the Denali Commission there, so they used the city of Saldovia's experience with the $22,000 that was appropriated through the federal congressional direct spending appropriation bill. And as a, as a great example of how they partnered with USDOT and ADOT to be able to have those funds transferred to them, and then once, and they're in the process of that right now, and then once that transfer is completed, they're actually have decided, so as long as nothing changes. The intent is then to tack those funds onto the Jack Loaf Matching Fund, even though that's a different project. They're going to broaden that project scope to include the road materials, so they were just going to slip those in and be able to access them and utilize them to purchase more material, which is part of that $33,000 that we have for road material, which we discussed in the CIP. So overall, great experience at the AML Summer Conference. I do look forward to those every year because it's a great time for the managers to get together and the mayors to get together, and just to get that, that update of what's happening in the state, as well as to be able to really discuss what position communities want AML to take with the state legislator. You know, they provide resolutions and they provide support, so it's a great opportunity to plan for the upcoming legislative session. So abatement ordinance, you might have noticed, has not been on the agenda. We did take that question back to legal that was out of the work session, and City Clerk Diamond also found another piece where we, where the ordinance itself had expanded the purpose and intent from vehicles to personal property and property within the city. But with that expansion, also expanded the time limit for vehicle empowerment, which is not necessarily the intent. So she's working through that process with legal to make sure that we still have that more defined time limit for vehicle empowerment. Water treatment plant, you guys have seen and heard that we did do a Facebook notice that we have received concerns about the water quality. We have been in close contact with our water operators. They have been in close contact with Alaska DEC, Department of Environmental Conservation, and, did I say that right? Yes. And our Alaska Rural Water Association, circuit rider, as well as our remote supervisor. The water, yes, we are in a high turbidity event, and there's more sediment in the water through our filtration plant. It's still filtering the water that's coming in. It's, we have an issue with the SCD, the stream current detector that's ongoing where when we have these high turbidity events, it pumps up the polymer, and it's pushing polymer in, and the polymer is decreasing the chlorine because it's a dechlorinator. And so then we're having to do more frequent flushes of the filters to get the polymer out and set the SCD on manual, which has been on manual for about three weeks now. And that way, we're limiting the injection of the polymer that's going in. That's what collects the the sediment, the turbidity that's coming in. So it's a, it's a whole operation. I've learned a lot about water in the last year. But what it boils down to is that we do have a pretty close eye on everything that's happening, and we want to continue to reassure people that we remain within limits when it comes to turbidity, as well as chlorine. We're doing daily samples like we usually do, and then actually, we're doing more frequent daily sampling to make sure that we aren't rising above the levels that we're supposed to be at. Did have a great call with ADEC last week, and they confirmed that we're still within those limits, and there's no need to issue a boil water notice. And we continue to move through this event. Speaking with water operator Botero today, he did say that it seems like the turbidity levels are decreasing those slightly. So we're hoping that that trend will continue. But it's, it's definitely something that we go through a couple of times a year, and he was grateful to have the assistance from Alaska Rural Water Association and Todd Cook. And one thing that he found helpful was hearing that even Homer is going through a high turbidity event. And I was like, well, that would be great in the future just to track as we're going through these events, to check in with the other communities around them and see what they're going through, because with this rainfall and everything that's happening, you know, over summer, extra sediment, things happening in the reservoir, and then of course, in the winter, when it turns over, we, this is a, this is a reoccurring theme. So if we can track it better, watch that SCD better, continue to work through the process. That's where we're at. But want to reassure everybody that we do monitor that and take that very seriously with, with frequent sampling to ensure that we are remaining in our limits, and we are. It's just not as clean as we're used to.
It's a vast improvement over the last couple of weeks.
Good.
Straight out of the tap right here, so it's just fine.
Public works update. The shop door, I don't know if I mentioned this before, it was off track just a little bit and moving over, so that's been adjusted. That's that new shop door, and they had time to work on the shop doors or the bay doors here at the fire department, and I heard those are working a lot better. Yay! So that's exciting to see that get done. The other crane is being painted, boat haulouts have begun. So now we're taking the So now we're taking the boats back out of the water, um, and the staff. Have completed or mostly completed. They were just finishing it hopefully today, maybe a little bit more tomorrow. Removing the insulation from the shop. Not a fun job. So maybe if you see the public works crew, give them, you know, some appreciation. Cause that was three hard weeks of every day working in insulation to remove it. So not fun, um, but they did it and, uh, they're looking forward to the crew coming off the boat on Thursday. And they'll start spray foaming, um, after they get here and get set up. And hopefully in a week and a half, we'll have. A newly spray foamed shop and, uh, and that'll make it sturdier and warmer and more pleasant to work in. So. Um, they did a really great, it looks like really clean on the inside because it had to be really clean to be able to apply that spray foam. So they've done a really great job. Removing that. I will say those, um, just for your guys' awareness that we did have money in the budget for the grant. To have that removal take place. So, so those funds, so that time spent. Removing, um, insulation is part of the overall project and will come out of those project funds.
Is the same company doing the fire, the fire retardant?
They are.
At the end then, okay.
They are. And so with that, again, that may be a place where we're having a little bit of in kind because that was, uh, eleven, that was an additional eleven thousand for the retardant. So.
True.
Um, but it's needed in order to be, um, compliant.
Yep.
Okay, let's see. Other upcoming projects. Oh, so we are waiting the new hooks for the pickup room. Those have been ordered. And we still want to do the yard cleanup across from the storage yard. I know we keep saying that, it sounds like a broken record, but we will get there. Um, again, thirty three thousand in road materials still available and continuing to work on roads hopefully this fall. Um, and then installing a new booster pump at the water treatment plant. We've been needing to do that for a while. It is a little bit more pressing now. Uh, because that during this process, that, uh, booster. Pump has started to give out and that's not related necessarily to the issue. It's just that. Um, it was, it's time. We kind of knew that was coming as the plant aged. It went online in two thousand seventeen. Um, we were told in seven years, we'd have to start replacing parts and we did and it continues to happen. So. Um, we're starting to get, uh, hopefully a schedule together of when these things are expiring. That way we can make sure that we're. Preparing in the future. And then just a heads up in case nobody is aware, the hazmat barge or anybody needs to be aware, the hazmat barge. Uh, will be scheduled to be here September fifth. So we're preparing for that. Uh, we talked a little bit about the pedestrian counters. So I won't, um, go too far into that. And DOT during the CIP works discuss, works, work session. Um, so continuing to work with, with them. Um, the uniform minor offense table is in our code and there have been code changes over the last couple of change. Over the last couple of years that impacted the uniform minor offense table, but those changes, um, weren't, uh, made through the court. So. City Clerk Diamond is working with VS, VPSO Morgan and the Alaska Court System to ensure that those. Are being updated, a little bit of a project there. Uh, we've talked about the multipurpose generation improvements project. We did, uh, send out a request for quotes and we've received, received a few. Uh, the, or not a few, we received one. Um, and it was for about ten thousand over the project budget. So we're reviewing options on how to proceed with this project. That seems to kind of be the current theme with things lately. It's ten thousand, ten thousand. Uh, raw water transmission line replacement project update. The request for proposals was issued. We have received some issue and we have a list of questions. Um, from two different firms that we're working to answer and hopefully get those issued this week. Um, well, we will get those issued this week. Hopefully we'll get them issued tomorrow. I mentioned that our AML grant writing services is working on two grants through the Rural Tribal Assistance Grant, and that's for the improvements to the historic boardwalk and a planning grant for the harbor waterfront boardwalk. Uh, KPBSD. And, um, KPB Assembly kind of pool update. The KPB Assembly Ordinance twenty five nineteen oh seven, uh, which would have deobligated two thousand dollars in maintenance funds and appropriated them to school operations. In an effort to support the pools was, was withdrawn at the assembly's August nineteenth meeting. And a lay down, a lay down was presented with a resolution, um, with similar language, but instead of. Directing those funds, which wasn't necessarily appropriate since. The borough can't direct how the district spends funds. Instead, the resolution is urging the school district to reallocate those funds for the operations at the Sodovia and Nilchuk School Pools. Um, as well as I met with Mayor Machiki last week and am, um, looking for, and, uh. Sursa President, Board President, uh, Diamond, uh, and I'm looking forward to future discussions, uh, between the two. And, and myself about what future management of that asset would look like in the community. And the reason why we're involved with that is because we do manage the Sea Otter Community Center and the staff. And that is through Sursa funds. So trying to ha, work out what that's going to look like in the future, if that's still going to be. The desire of the borough or if they want to take on a bigger role and manage the pool and manage that space, um, through Sursa funds. So that'll be an ongoing discussion. Um, I believe I mentioned it at the last meeting during my verbal report, but I also attended that KPB Assembly meeting. Uh, at the beginning of August and. Uh, the city council had directed myself to attend. Uh, because there was some resolution or sorry, some, an ordinance put forth to put a ballot proposition. Or put a proposition on the ballot to have a seasonal. Sales tax, which would increase summer sales tax to four percent and winter sales tax, uh, would decrease to two percent. That was also withdrawn. Um, and speaking with Mayor Machiki pre, earlier, um, we discussed what that impact would be to Sodovia. And that we can, we'll work together through this winter if that's something that the. Assembly wants to continue, uh, to pursue. On how to negate some of those impacts to the community. So I'm glad that they gave us a little bit of time on that. Um, and we can have some open communication and see what that would be because that's about a fifty thousand dollar loss. Um, potentially to the community if they, if that was implemented by the voter and this, and. The community, the voters here countered with a decrease. Um, of the one percent so that we're, we're not going above nine and a half percent sales tax in the summer. So, uh, a little bit more time to work on that. Uh, I asked, we also talked in this. CIP work session that we are looking at a quote to repair the safety ladders on the dock. And I wanted to make sure to let you guys know that the. Twenty twenty five NERS infrastructure funding project, uh, funding opportunity was canceled. So that was the projects for land acquisition, uh, that we were working on with KB NER. For the Trina Lake properties or the property around the water treatment plant. Uh, that's no longer an opportunity that's available. The, uh, NER has decided to absorb those funds. And, um, use them for existing projects that they have. Uh, we are working through our Main Street inlet and Vista and Frank Gravy projects. As mentioned, HDR and Seabright survey were here last week and are working on the design and construction plans for those. Uh, Jack Loaf Bay Dock Funding Match, uh, had a kickoff meeting with Denali Commission and, uh, again, already mentioned that they're gonna. Incorporate that twenty two thousand in road funds. And everything else, I believe we've gone over. I would add. That I didn't include in here on the comprehensive plan update that I did receive a draft of that comp plan last week. I have not had a chance to review it, um, from AML. So I'm going to go over that. As well as we discussed previously, send them that list of projects from our CIP discussion that you guys had earlier. Um, and then work towards having that, uh, to be presented at the September sixth planning commission meeting. And here, if you have any questions, thank you.
How about the, any, um, one thing you didn't touch on is the HEA project for the generator replacement? Is that, uh, still, are those guys still here? Are they all wrapped up now or is that going to be going for a while?
You know, they were supposed to go through mid September. I did not, I have not had an update since my return yesterday. I don't know if clerk diamond has anything to add to that, but it was on my mind to follow up with them.
Yeah, we haven't had an update. There's been some people doing fencing and other stuff around it, but my impression is I still have a little bit left to do. They are coming for a community, community wide meeting. Can't remember the date.
It's Wednesday.
Next Wednesday. So.
For HEA?
For HEA. Yeah, at the Sea Otter Center. Well, thirty, but Subway sandwiches.
Okay, that's the same way they did last year when Carrie Anne and those go all the.
Yes.
Yeah.
The annual HEA.
Yeah, that was about forty five people show up to that meeting. It was actually a super good meeting, real open dialogue. And I'd encourage everyone to go to that. Uh, they did provide lunch, but yeah, it was just a real good, when they talked about all the, the brushing and stuff that they did this summer with Carlos, what they were going to do. So. There was no surprises when those guys showed up and, you know, did all this massive, um, brushing of all the right of ways and stuff. So. Uh, they're on a big, big kick to get the, the problem trees out of the, out of the way. Obviously our outages have been quite a few less, um, um, than they have in years past. So. That's all, all good things with them upgrading their infrastructure and stuff. And I know they're still working on some large, um, large grant projects to, for. Power redundancy over here in, in Sodovia. So that's, hopefully they'll have an update for us on that as well. So which would be good. All right, any other questions, uh, for the city manager on the manager's report tonight? Okay, thanks Heidi. Um, as always, good, lots of information. Okay, item O informational items not requiring action. The Sodovia's, uh, city of Sodovia regular, regular municipal election will be held on Tuesday, October seventh, twenty twenty five. Um, the last day to register to qualify to vote in the October seventh, twenty twenty five city election is September seventh. So that's coming up. For anyone that still needs to get registered. And the Cook Inlet, uh, Region Citizens Advisory Committee, otherwise known as CircAC, will have a board director's meeting at the Sodovia Conference Center on September fifth, twenty twenty five, starting at nine AM. Um, real quick while we're on that, can you just explain real quick with the changes on the write-in? The write-in policy now, how that's working, uh, up to election day?
Yeah. So with the changes and the write-in from the ordinance from last year, um, people can sign up. Prior to the election, up to the day beforehand to be a write-in candidate. Which point if they do that, then their names will be counted and they'll be able to be eligible for the full seat. That there, um, that's on that ballot. Otherwise it would go back to an appointment.
Okay, so if they're, if they haven't come into the city office and signed up the day before the election. And declared that they're, then they're, if they're, if their name shows up on as a write-in, then it's, it's deleted or not counted.
Yeah, well, yeah, it won't be counted for the full term, but it would be eligible to be appointed.
Okay.
If there is an open seat.
Okay.
And the, the form to fill out is very similar to the declaration of candidacy form that was filled out by the candidate that did file. These are for people who want to be candidates. They're going to accept that, but they didn't make it in time for the deadline for the ballot.
And is there any early voting or anything, or is this just a one, one day deal? What are we doing on that this year?
Um, there's early voting starting, um, September.
Is that for fourteen or fifteen days?
Fourteen days.
Fourteen days, okay.
So it will start, um, September twenty second.
Okay, and that'll be in the council chambers?
That'll be, um, the early voting will be.
Excuse me, at the city?
At the city office from nine AM to four thirty PM until the day of the election. And then it'll move to here and that will be for city and borough elections.
Okay, that works good if you're going to be out of town on that day. So Tuesday, October seventh. Okay, uh, sounds good. Item P executive session, none. Item Q council and mayor comments concerning items not on the agenda. Rojas?
Yeah, no, just thank you everyone for tonight.
Okay, Peyton? Nothing? Okay, Keith Lee?
I just want to thank everybody for coming. There's so many people here tonight. We appreciate it.
So it's good to see faces in the audience. So, uh, Langbart?
No comment. Everybody have a good night. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Barbara?
No comment.
Okay, um, I'll just say thanks to the staff. Appreciate everything, uh, getting prepared for the meeting. Thanks for all the information. Uh, next regular meeting will be held on Monday, September eighth, twenty twenty five at six PM and I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
I second it.
All right, any opposition to the motion to adjourn? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.